All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this regular meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Ellis.
Here.
Counselor Day.
Here.
Counselor Stokes. Counselor Holloway. We have a corner.
Okay, um, do we have anyone tuned in online?
No, we do not.
Okay, is there a motion to go into closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider personnel matters, including board and commission appointees, city clerk contract, city clerk, city manager, city attorney, performance evaluation process, planning commission, keep Hopewell beautiful, architecture review board, Hopewell water renewal, District 19, Hopewell redevelopment, housing authority, and the community policy and management team, Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A29 and 8, to discuss the award of a public contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the city's bargaining position and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters, discussion of an unsolicited offer of real estate property, insurance contract, and Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8, treasurers and director of finances duties, and code of conduct. All right, motions been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Would you all like to do the parts that we can't be in there on the board and commission appointments first, and then we'll join you after?
Yeah, a lot of that shouldn't take very long at all. Okay.
Certificate for so. Virginia Code, where only public business matters lawfully exempt from opening meeting requirements, and to identified in the closed meeting motion discussion in the closed meeting.
Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Uh, certification, yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Motion passes five, five to zero.
Okay, at this time, is there a motion to appoint Latonya Doctor and Brenda Pelham to the community planning management team committee? Uh, Rosalyn Capers to District 19, Chris Loftstrom to the architecture review board, and Todd Butterworth to the planning commission? I'll second it. Uh, discussion? Counselor Holloway?
What was the other, the other two, 'cause they want to interview, what was the first one you were saying?
CPMT.
Okay, okay. Yes.
Okay, so any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, uh, moving on to our work session, first up is Chief Rupert.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
This, um, and members of City Council, I just want to, before we get started into the presentations tonight, tonight we have the fire budget presentation, which is the last presentation of the departments, um, and then next we'll have expenditure, CIP, and outside agencies. We do not expect to have any conversations, um, just presentations tonight. Um, the budget is required to be balanced by April 1st, and in which, April the 8th, we will present a balanced budget afterwards, the, uh, for the new members of council, we take the time throughout the month of April to look at the balanced budget, and council will get an opportunity at those future budget meetings to, um, um, adjust the budget, you know, talk about their priorities, um, and things that they would like to see in the budget, um, and, and from that point on, it's just tweaking until we get to, um, presenting it to the public in May.
Okay.
Okay.
Floor is yours, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor Parton, Vice Mayor Joyner, and Vice Mayor Joyner, we have to present Fire Department's budget tonight. Um, I always like to start off with a, uh, just a real quick reminder of what it is that we do. Uh, just, uh, just not, not long ago, on the 14th, we, uh, Fire Department received a call for smoking residents. That quickly, uh, was upgraded to, uh, a structured fire upon arrival. One of the, uh, residents was attempting to, uh, pull someone out, uh, who had been burnt as well as, uh, uh, smoke inhalation. Uh, they assisted that person out and then went in for the second, there was a second individual who had also been burnt and was, uh, also suffering from smoke inhalation. Got both of those folks out. The, uh, the fire crews, uh, extinguished the remainder of the fire, uh, that was there, and then because we did not have, uh, aircraft available to, uh, transport these folks directly, uh, we had to ground transport, uh, these, these folks directly. They were both in, uh, very critical condition. Uh, we had to, uh, eventually use eight personnel, about 13, uh, that's on duty to transport those two folks because of their, the severity of their condition. One of the individuals actually had to be, um, surgically pried on the way due to their, uh, the condition of their airway. Um, both of them, however, are at VCU, uh, one of them has been taken off of it and is, uh, continuing to improve, uh, continuing to receive, uh, treatment for, uh, burns, and the second individual is still on event, but they're improving, and they're slowly going to be leaving them off of that, and they hope to be off of that soon. So, uh, both of those individuals, um, again, uh, that's, that's kind of the, that's the bread and butter of what we do, and, and tonight you'll see, as part of my presentation, that my focus is on EMS, uh, we do, we do both, um, and, uh, and in this particular call, really the, the essence of what we did was that EMS, uh, response, the, the treatment and the transport of those two, uh, fire victims. Um, so as I usually always speak to is, uh, you know, where, what our resources are personnel-wise, uh, you know, the NFPA, the national standard for, uh, a, a single-family structure fire is 16 personnel. As I just minute, uh, mentioned a minute ago, uh, we field 13 on a normal day, and, and, and four of those, at least four of those, are dedicated full-time to the ambulance, uh, and then we also have a second, uh, unit that's cross-staffed with the, with the ladder truck. So, that's, that's from just a regular residential structure. Uh, garden-style apartments, we have a number of those here in the city, uh, require 28 personnel, uh, to respond, and obviously, we're responding with the same 13 folks. Um, I had detailed a little bit, the end of last year, I, I know some of you weren't on council at the time, um, some of the challenges that we're dealing with as far as EMS, um, and, uh, you know, the, the biggest issue that we have right now is, well, has been honestly, um, recruitment and retention of EMS personnel. Our EMS personnel run a lot of calls, they run 85, about 85% of the, our call volume. Um, and, um, they are constantly running, there, it's a very, very high rate of, of usage, and, um, that, that usage, of course, you know, results in burnout. Um, you can see here, this is a, this is a graph of our EMS call volume over the years. Uh, you can see where, uh, HEC, the local emergency crew, um, for, for a number of years, uh, 2012 through 17, they had a paid crew that they were paying to supplement, um, the lack of volunteers they had to, to fulfill the call volume. Um, in 2017, they, they, uh, discontinued that, um, and you can see that between 2017 and 2023, uh, our EMS call volume has essentially doubled. Um, and, and we have the same amount of personnel to, um, to cover those responses. Um, so, uh, what we have done is, um, uh, we've looked at a, uh, we've looked at a change in our schedule. Um, you know, we, on a, on a regular day, if we're not working a lot of overtime, we really need 18 ALS providers, uh, to, to be able to manage our, our EMS, uh, call volume, and, um, the end, towards the end of last year, we were down to 11, so we had, we were, we had a seven provider deficit, um, and, uh, and so we were not able to, um, do all of the, provide the same level of service that we always had. So, for instance, uh, there was a, there was a number of times when our, our medic three was staffed with an EMT-enhanced, um, which is a slight, slightly less capability than, uh, a paramedic, um, and then there was also times when some of our engines, uh, were not advanced life support, and a lot of times, they first respond out to calls when an ambulance is not immediately available. Um, and so, uh, that, that deficit and, and the fact that we weren't really able to recruit anyone, we had, uh, you know, in six months of recruiting, uh, we had one viable application, and that person failed our process, um, they, they weren't able to pass our testing process, uh, and so we essentially had no, no one applying for these positions, and so we made, you know, had some discussions with the city manager about changing our schedule for ALS providers, and we changed to a 24/72 schedule, um, and at that time, um, we knew that that meant that we were gonna have to add a, another shift, uh, in order to cover that 24/72 schedule for our EMS providers. Um, but we knew that we, uh, with our pay being below everyone else in the region, um, and really having nothing else to offer folks, and, and with these people being burnt out with, with the level of call volume that we had, we had to do something, uh, that we could offer folks that would attract them to the city of Hopewell. Um, and so we, we made the change, um, knowing that, uh, you know, we, we would be coming to you asking for some additional positions, and of course, this was all outlined in a memo that I sent, uh, last year, um, and since then, we've had nine viable applications, uh, we've successfully hired four of those folks, and then three of those are in process, and actually, the three in process, I think since I created this, I think, uh, two of those, uh, are, are completed. So, we've, we've made huge strides, um, as far as recruiting, um, but, but primarily because of that change in schedule, um, because this is a highly sought-after schedule, uh, and it's not offered in this area very, very much, there's only one other locality, and they are the lowest paid in the, in the area, uh, who offer the schedule, and so, uh, this has really helped us turn the corner as far as our ALS capabilities. Um, so, that being said, uh, my personnel request this year is I need three additional positions to fill out that last shift. So, we have already switched over to the 24/72 for our ALS providers, uh, we have, and what we've done is we've just staffed them with less people, so there's not, uh, so we, so we went ahead and staffed all four shifts, but there's not enough people to fill out the shift. Um, so we need, uh, those additional three, uh, positions to be able to fill out the, the, the rest of that, uh, cadre of folks. Um, that estimated cost is $219,621.54. Um, that includes their, their benefits as well, so pay and benefits. Um, then we, I also ask for another, another three, uh, additional folks for our, our shift. Um, this will allow us to allow that third medic, as, as I spoke about earlier, our medic and our ladder across staff, and what that means is whichever call comes in first, those folks jump on that piece of apparatus and they go out the door. So, if a fire call comes in first, they're gonna be on the fire apparatus, they go out the door on the fire apparatus. If an EMS call comes in first, they go out on the EMS call. Um, getting these three additional people will allow us to, to staff that medic, um, more often, and, and, and we'll be able to, uh, field that more often with the, the addition of those three people. That, that cost is $208,894.23. Um, finally, as far as the personnel area of West, uh, I've asked for $48,854, and this is to fund, uh, our career development program. Um, one of the things that is important to us as we go forward, as far as retention, is to have a place for our, uh, our firefighters to go, as far as being able to increase their capabilities, their benefit to us, as far as their training levels, but also their pay. Um, and, um, I know that, uh, the class and comp study, and I have this on the, the screen as well, um, you know, implementing the, the class and comp study, the results of that are really, gonna be really important for us as far as retention, uh, but this, um, uh, request as well, is also very important because it gives them a, a career path. Uh, for those who, you know, we have a small department, so there's not a lot of supervision people, when they, when they look around and they look at their opportunities as far as advancement in their career, uh, they see, they're gonna see a lot of young officers. Uh, most of our captains are, are young and early in their career, and so they wanna see a place for them, them to go, they wanna see a place for them to move, and so, career development, uh, gives them that. I know you all granted the police department, their career development last year, they were, they were able to, to re-implement their career development, uh, program last year, and so we are asking for that this year so that we can, again, give our, our folks, um, a place to go as far as their, their, uh, continued career. Uh, as far as capital requests, um, first of all, um, this is just a, a reminder, um, I think you all know this, and I know it's, I, I hope that it remains high on your, your radar, uh, Station 1 is, uh, will be 100 years old in 2026, uh, and Station 2 will be 75 years old this year. So, um, both stations are very old, um, both, both of them are in, in dire need of replacement, and I know that we're not in a position right now, but it would, um, not do me justice to, to get up here and talk about capital without at least mentioning that and reminding everybody of where we are. Um, as far as apparatus needs, um, we are in need of ordering a number of apparatus. Uh, we need to order two engines and two ambulances. Uh, the, the lead times on this apparatus has gotten extreme, as well as the costs. Um, it used to be, uh, that we would have a year and a half or so lead time on a fire engine, uh, maybe a year on an ambulance. We're now at three to, anywhere between two and a half and four years on an engine, um, and we're about two years on an ambulance, and so we have to get out ahead of, of our needs, and we have to order ahead of our needs. Um, I know, uh, from the last, uh, council meeting that I was here when I was originally gonna present, um, I was very excited to hear you all talk about, uh, you know, capital needs and, and, and trying to look ahead and trying to take care of capital needs. I can tell you that in the past, um, and I know it's been a complaint of council in the past, is that we, um, wait until it's an emergency, um, wait until things are, are falling apart and the wheels are coming off, and then we come to you and we have this big, huge request, um, and, and that just doesn't, uh, bode well for a budget process, especially when we look at the prices of some of these apparatus. So, to give you an idea here, um, uh, engines now, um, are at $1.3 million? Yep, $1.3 million. Uh, a, uh, an ambulance now is over $500,000, um, and so when we talk about, um, making the request, if I were to ask you to, tonight, to fund two engines and two ambulances like I need you to do, we'd be talking about a request of $3.7 million. Um, I know that that's outside of anything that we have the capability of doing, and so, um, I've, uh, for the last year, I've been working on an app, apparatus replacement plan, um, and this plan would, uh, look at leasing options. Um, it would allow us to replace our, uh, engines at, uh, 10 years, our ladder trucks at 15, and our ambulances at 10, uh, as well, and, uh, what this will do is it'll allow us to, uh, keep things on the road like they're supposed to be. I can tell you, the, the engines that we currently have, um, so for instance, we have a, a 1986 Pierce that was, uh, donated to us in January from the county of New Kent, um, as a reserve piece. That piece of apparatus has not gone out of service, but for a couple days in the past year. So, that's how we, we've, we always have something out of service that we're working on, we're constantly fighting to keep our stuff in service. Um, and that's, and we're, so, and we're talking about now looking at another three years or more that we're gonna be trying to keep this apparatus in, in service, um, so that we can continue to service the citizens. Um, what I have proposed, um, is, uh, in the, in this lease program or lease, lease, uh, replacement plan, um, would be, you know, leasing these vehicles over the course of seven years. Um, the lease payments on the two ambulances would be 176,0594, the lease payment for the, uh, fire engines would be 456,183, for a total of 632,778,43. Now, I can tell you that, I know that's a big number, um, and unfortunately, when I, when I made the plan only six months ago, uh, that number was a lot lower. Um, I can tell you that the prices of annual, uh, of engines has gone up almost $300,000 in the last six months, um, and so, uh, you know, these, these prices are just, they're, they're insane, and all, all fire departments and municipalities are dealing with this same issue. Um, however, what I can tell you is that even with that, that cost, um, with EMS revenue, uh, with salary savings, um, at the end of the year, as I, as I've looked back at our history and I've looked at, uh, where we are as far as our EMS revenues and all, I believe that most of this can be covered if we're allowed at the end of the year, um, to take that, that, that EMS revenue that we've made over and above what's budgeted, uh, as well as our, our savings, um, and put that into the apparatus fund. Um, you know, the apparatus fund was created a number of years ago, um, to fund these big-ticket items, um, and if we consistently put, um, uh, this, this money into that apparatus replacement fund, that every year, we'll be paying those lease payments, and you won't see me coming before you asking for $3 million, uh, for apparatus. Um, and we can continue to order and replace these at the, at the rate that I have indicated tonight, um, uh, with really a, a minimal impact to the budget, if we're allowed to take those funds that we have and use them at the end of the year to roll into that fund. Um, so I would ask you to, to, um, consider that, this is a way for us to, to look at capital on a long-term planning, uh, uh, option that would allow us to continually replace our stuff, not have those big-ticket items pop up, uh, on us, um, and, um, and keep our apparatus in service. Um, I did have two line item increases that I requested, well, one was more of a, a new, there's a third one that was more informational. Uh, as far as actual line items, the first is recruitment and retention line, this is a new line we created this year. As you know, uh, we were at a place where we were at 16 positions down, um, we had to do a lot of things to get back to where we are today. Uh, we had to pay for, uh, paid advertisement in social, on social media, and we've also had to invest in an additional, uh, recruit school, and so there's a lot of costs associated with those that we had to steal from other, uh, cobble together from other parts of the budget to try to make this work, um, and, and pay for these things, 'cause we never had a line, and so I'm asking for $33,000, uh, in that, so that helps, you know, pay for all those recruitment materials, pay for all the advertising, um, as well as pay for the costs associated with the rookie schools that we now are having to do on an annual basis, just because we can't find pre-certified people as we've done in the past. Um, the second request that I have is a lease of, uh, our lease of vehicles line. Uh, last year, when we cut back the number of vehicles that we were gonna purchase, I also cut my budget, um, to reflect that. Um, uh, however, um, you know, we've gone back to look at getting the rest of those vehicles that we needed. Um, I also know, noticed that, uh, you know, the, the quote that we originally got, which was our budget, uh, that was from, uh, Enterprise, uh, was based on a certain vehicle and a certain, you know, specs, uh, however, they weren't able to get that, um, and so what we ended up with was something that was more expensive, which impacted the budget. And so, the, uh, the $25,960 increase in that line will allow me to, uh, order the two additional vehicles that I need to replace on the Enterprise leasing program. The final thing really is just, uh, this is just, uh, more of an informational piece. I know finance does all the budgeting as far as our, uh, overtime and our, and our personnel, um, but based on the last three years, the average, uh, overage in our EMS overtime budget, um, I've asked this year for $146,000, um, uh, request, and in the past, it's had about, um, $25,000 in that line. Any questions?
Uh, Counselor Holloway, and then myself.
I don't have much of a question, it's just some, uh, statements, thank you again for your presentation. Um, when I came on council, I think you were probably one of the, uh, first people that had a, a, a presentation where you see, see the new administration will welcome, welcoming, talking about cap, uh, capital projects and so forth, and so again, um, in, in, and all the directors in the city have, 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 have done well in, in that. I, I'm hoping and praying that, um, our budget leaves us to answer some of these requests. As, uh, always say, um, all of our, uh, all of our departments are important, um, but when it comes to the police department and the fire department, when it comes to our safety, um, and me living and moving directly in front of the fire department, I always tell people, I never knew that the fire department, um, they went out so much, and that's just one fire station. And I also make the comment, um, that you didn't have in this presentation tonight, uh, when you were making comment about the renovations to such old buildings, and you, and, and you may or may not know this off the top of your head, uh, but could you also express, you know, just for a second? Uh, we have two fire stations, and, and just even replacing those fire stations would be astronomical, but with the size of our city, um, I think I had learned, uh, while I was out at a conference, that our city would actually, uh, if, if it were in budget, it would be better to at least have three fire departments. Could, could you expound on, uh, that for a second?
Sure, so, um, when it comes to response time, and of course, the number of stations usually is always driven by response time and, and what the expectation is on that, um, I can tell you that, uh, based on our city, um, out towards, uh, basically where WHAP is.
Yes.
If we could drop a fire station right there, um, that would be ideal, um, uh, because the River Road, you know, that whole River Road and, and everything out there is, is our farthest, uh, runtime from both Station 2 and Station 1, both of them, uh, struggling with out there, uh, in the same, you know, response time that the rest of the city has. So, it would definitely benefit us, uh, to have a third station right there, um, and, and we have looked at that in the past, um, and so, uh, you know, if we were to have that opportunity, that, that would probably be, um, our best location.
Now, I brought that up because of course, as you said, it's something that the city cannot afford, but it's something to think about when you're asking for, um, these positions, um, the, the additional, uh, support and people, because, uh, being that we only have two fire stations and emergency calls come out, just like the one you just spoke of earlier, where the majority of the team is out on calls, or in some, not even at work because they're not on shift, um, that the, the distance already causes much of a burden, um, and then even more so of a burden with less staff, so, uh, I, it is my hope again that we, um, take these things into consideration when we're talking about the safety of someone, um, having a heart attack or any other, uh, emergency, uh, medical emergencies. Uh, thank you again for your presentation.
Okay, um, so, mine's not necessarily a question, mine's more of just kind of a statement. Um, I really do like, you know, the idea that you've proposed, um, about taking, you know, your EMS collections and, you know, budget savings that you have, and trying to reinvest them back into capital. Um, you know, I, I, you know, encourage, you know, department directors to, you know, try to run their budgets conservatively, so then that way, you know, you can do exactly like what you're proposing. Um, I think that that would end up helping us a lot on our, you know, capital backlog across the whole city. Um, so, I mean, if you can, you know, you, Dr. Maker, can, you know, try to provide us, you know, with, you know, I don't know if it needs to be like a policy, uh, put in place, or, um, it needs to be like a, a practice, but, I mean, I would love to explore that option, uh, to see if we can bring that to a reality.
I, I think for the fire department, I already have, um, a, a policy in place to re-in, to take his savings, not his savings per se, but your, the monies that he makes from, um, the ambulance to put back into, yes, uh, we just haven't gotten to that stage, it's been going back to the general fund, but this year, um, he has sprung that to our attention and Stacy, and we're working on making sure that that happens at the end of this budget.
Okay, all right, then I apologize, I misheard you, I thought that was, you know, something that you were proposing for us to, you know, take some action on.
No, it's, it's in the budget resolutions, so it's been there for a while, and when I realized that it was still there.
Okay.
It would have been there years ago, um, when I realized it was still there, that's when I approached Dr. Maker and Stacy about, um, you know, implementing it, uh, because obviously, that would, um, allow there to be minimal impact, you know, impact to the operational budget, um, but still allow us to accomplish the task of, you know, replacing our apparatus in a, in a timely fashion.
Okay, great. Uh, Vice Mayor Joyner, and then Counselor Harris.
I also have just a comment, just wanted to say, um, the presentation was outstanding, and I just to also appreciate the innovation, um, you know, clearly, we're innovative when you looked at the scheduling to try and, and recruit these additional people, um, and even though this is an old resolution, you're still bringing it to life, and they were innovative a few years ago, obviously, and now we're taking advantage of it, but, um, just wanted to say thanks, and I think you all do a great job working with, um, um, fire stations that need a lot of improvement, and so I think you do a grand job, and Mr. Holloway and I came on the same time, and we remember the presentation that you gave us, as new counselors, so, wanna say thank you, great presentation.
Counselor Harris?
Did I, did I hear you? Have you made a, a determination yet where a new station would be?
No, so we, we haven't done an, an official study, but I know just from anecdotal information, just from us knowing our, our call area, I mean, you know, um, knowing what the kind of, you know, the, the, the longest response times that we have is usually out that way, and so, um, you know, uh, that's, it, that's not an official recommendation, that's just anecdotal, just from my experience in the fire, the fire department, and, and knowing where our longest runs are, is out in that area, so somewhere in that vicinity, um, would be a, a good location for a third fire station if we were to get one.
So, is this rumored that, uh, the state? So is this rumored that the station was going to be at Arlington and Winston Churchill Drive?
So, yes, sir. So a couple, this has been a number of years ago, and it was proposed that we would consolidate down to one station, and at that point, that's where that station would go. It would be a huge, very large, very expensive station. I honestly don't agree with that plan. I think that it would negatively impact our response times. As Counselor Holloway indicated, you know, the best case would be actually to go to three stations, so I certainly wouldn't want to consolidate to one. And so when we're, and I've already started planning on trying to figure out a way to budget a replacement of two for a cost similar to what that one monstrous station would cost. And so I've started already looking at locations, I've already started getting plans from some other localities on some smaller stations that are less expensive. I hope that by the time the city's in a position to, 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 to put out a bond in order to replace the stations, I'll have a nice, clean plan that I can present to you all as far as, you know, budgeting for two stations at least versus the consolidation to one. But you're absolutely correct that the original plan was to consolidate to one at the Arlington Road location.
Yes, sir. Okay. All right, well, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have Ms. Jordan.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Talking about the apparatus fund, when Chief Rupert and I spoke with Dr. Maker, I think would be best if we amend our financial policies and include.
Can you speak into the microphone?
If we amend our financial policies and include the apparatus fund piece in our financial policies instead of on the budget resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I apologize for interrupting. We have fifteen minutes, this is kind of, we need to extend the meeting.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, it is almost the witching hour. Can I get a motion to extend the meeting until we complete the, what is it, R six? All right, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Tonight, I'm here to present the fiscal year twenty-six budgeted, proposed expenses for the city of Hopewell. Primary city programs and funds include general government, enterprises, health and welfare, schools, and debt. Expense forecasts come from personnel costs, services and supplies, capital, as well as The expense strategy for fiscal year twenty-six includes maintain operations at current level, funds needed to operate capital, and remaining funds if available, build reserves as revenues left after funding capital, the class and compensation implementation for public safety and recreation, health insurance increase of twelve percent or six hundred thousand dollars, a COLA increase three percent across the board, state and social services and constitutional also receive three percent across. Expense assumptions, employee salaries, three percent COLA increase outside of public safety, class and compensation, implementation for public safety, as well as potential increases for parks and rec to bring them from twelve to fifteen dollars an hour. Health insurance, the city to absorb eighty percent increase, roughly five hundred thousand, and the rest will be passed on. Departmental increases were presented to, March twentieth to council. Capital as determined by departments, actual funding will be based on available revenue and other funding sources. Our expenses by category and function include outside agencies, planning, non-departmental, schools, judicial, parks and rec, health and welfare, sewer, HRW, public works, and public safety. Expenses by type, other, schools, transfers, capital, debt, services and supplies, professional services, and personnel. Transfers, grant matches, and city shares, we have our city share for DSS, transfer to schools, our share for CSA and CPMT, transfer to recreation, our transfer to capital projects, economic development, the EDA, transfer for self-insurance, debt services, and as well as our match for healthy families. On page nine, we have a list of our outside agency requests. We have broken it down by required contributions, recommended contributions, and discretionary contributions. Of course, there was an increase, it was a slight increase to creative detention center as well as Riverside Regional Jail for this upcoming fiscal year of two hundred and eighty Our capital projects, the largest piece would be from engineering of seven point six million. For capital projects, impact on operational budget, the relationship between the CIP and operating budget is carefully considered during the operating budget process. CIP has three different impacts on the budget. Any projects funded with general fund resources must be evaluated and prioritized, and operating lifecycle's caused from implementation such as staffing and maintenance costs, and there are potential funding sources for CIP, which include money direct from the general fund, long-term debt, revenue bonds, and state and federal grants. General fund. This is a working document, the expenditures were totaled at sixty-nine, six, but now they're down to sixty-nine, three, twenty-four, nine, seventy-seven, for changes to positions and salaries, and of course, the healthcare after we approved what plan that the city was going to take. The police expenses. Services supplies is slightly up, professional services, as well as salary and wages. Fire expenses, we have an increase to salary, services and supplies, of course, salary and wages, slight increase to VRS and healthcare, and then other personnel, which would include, like, when you have to have health assessments or anything like that done, that's included in other personnel, but if you want to do more detailed breakdown, please just let me know and I can pull the information for you. Public works. Services supplies is pretty steady, as well as professional services, other personnel just a slight decrease, healthcare, of course, is an increase, VRS, and then salaries and wages, slight increase, but that comes from different, restructuring some of the positions. Recreation, services supplies is an increase, professional services is pretty level, other personnel is a slight increase, health, of course, is an increase, VRS increase, as well as personnel, salaries and wages. Development, which is include, planning, co-compliance. We don't have anything going for outside agencies, that's on the previous slide, and other department for outside agencies, services and supplies, slight decrease, professional services, a little increase, you have other personnel costs, which is an increase, health increase, VRS increase, as well as salary and wages. Okay? The city manager's budget, which also includes economic development, there was, and communications, governmental affairs, a lot of the increase from city manager's budget comes from an additional employee for economic development, as well as an additional employee for governmental And finance. There was a slight increase in salary and wages that came from the positions that were created previously. VRS is pretty much level, just a slight increase, healthcare, of course, is an increase, other personnel costs, slight increase, professional services, of course, is a decrease because we no longer have the RGV group, as well as services supplies, slight increase. Enterprise funds. Hope water renewal. Other personnel slight increase, healthcare increase, VRS slight increase, as well as salary and wages. We just went through the budget meeting last week, with HRW, we had another meeting today, and we'll be able to have the commission meeting on the fifteenth, to try to finalize HWR's budget. Sewer expenses, increase in services and supplies, professional services decrease, other personnel slight decrease, health, VRS, and salary and wages. And we will get an increase in some of the stormwater fees, given the credit from industrial that will switch. So we'll show an increase when we come back to council with the revenues and expenses. Refugees, slight increase on services and supplies, professional services slight increase, other personnel slight decrease, health insurance kind of level, but they had some changes in their personnel, VRS, as well as salaries and wages. And then we have stormwater. Stormwater services supplies pretty level across, professional service slight increase, other personnel, decrease, healthcare decrease, VRS slight increase, and then salaries and wages slight decrease. Okay? And we have our health and welfare, which includes social services, CSA, and healthy families. Remember, social services will be receiving a three percent increase from the state this Then we have CSA. That was, as well as healthy families, and they did get additional funding that was coming from, I want to say Prince George, and then Woody, I believe, this year. All right, we're on to debt. The debt service issued is just broken down by HRW, sewer, schools, and general fund, and these are the, we have our two fifteen, two fourteen, two eleven A, these are our And then the next slide just shows year over year how our debt will increase as far as the payments are concerned, as well as for utilities and tax-supported debt payments. Once we get to twenty twenty-eight, we'll have a tremendous drop as far as our debt payments are concerned, and free up a lot more money for us to be able to focus a lot more capital on other projects in the city. Schools, we're doing our standard contribution to schools, thirteen, five, eighty. And then the last few slides are the capital detail, which was presented to council Thursday when they did their departmental budgets, but this is the detailed list breakdown for the next five years for each department. Any questions? I know I kind of went through that fast.
Don't worry, there's plenty more budget work sessions. All right, don't see any lights, thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that closes out our work session, and we will now move into our regular meeting. So I will call the regular meeting to order, can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Parton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Ellis?
Here.
Counselor Day?
Here.
Counselor Stokes?
Counselor Holloway?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
All right, at this time, could I have the prayer done by Pastor Blow, followed by the pledge of allegiance by myself? Please rise.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this meeting today. We ask that you would have your way in this meeting. Father, you said if we would acknowledge you in all our ways, you would direct our path. So Father, we're asking you, Lord, to bless this city council, bless them, Lord God, to honor you in all their decisions. And Father, we pray that this city will be like a city set upon a hill that cannot be hidden, that you would bless it and let it, Lord God, meet its budgets and all the things that it's trying to do for the citizens of this city. We ask you, Lord God, to bless it, and we thank you for all that you're doing in our midst. Let us be on one accord, one mind, and we thank you for all that you're doing for us. We pray this in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, at this time, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Day. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yeah.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the regular meeting agenda?
So moved.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, communications from citizens, Madam Clerk, do you mind reading the statement?
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be approved or received by one motion, and the form listed items may be removed from the consent agenda for discussion under.
Communications from citizens section, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, there you go, that's all right.
A communication from citizens period, limited in total time to thirty minutes, is part of the order of business at each regular council meeting. All persons addressing the council shall approach the microphone, give their name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward and limits comments to three minutes. No one is permitted to speak on any item scheduled for consideration on the regular agenda of the meeting. All remarks shall be addressed at, addressed to this council as a body. Any questions must be asked through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personnel impotent, abusive, or slanderous statements or incites disorderly conduct in council chambers may be barred by the mayor from further audience before council and removed subject to appeal to a majority of council, see rules four oh five and four oh six.
Okay, we don't have anyone signed up, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, move on to our regular business, R one, Ms. Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're here to discuss the health insurance renewal increase. Mary Jones from London will be presenting the recommendations.
Okay.
All right, so as far as the renewal for the upcoming plan year, which begins July first of this year, the local choice renewal, as mentioned earlier, is coming in at a twelve percent increase. We also have Medicare-eligible retirees on the plan that have their services through the local choice program as well, and you can see those premiums are increasing from two eighteen to two thirty-two. We also, One Digital does an analysis of the renewal as well, and you can see our assessment is coming in at a thirteen point nine percent increase, therefore, the TLC renewal is fair based off of the assessment they have given us. I'm going to go over two options, so we have option A at the top of the slide here. This option is sharing the increase with the employees, so the city is absorbing a portion and the employees are absorbing a portion of the increase. So again, the total increase is twelve percent, which is about six hundred and twenty thousand dollars total. Of that, in this scenario, the city would absorb about five hundred and eight thousand, and the employees would absorb about a hundred and twelve thousand. And the next. In the next scenario, option B at the top of the slide is just showing you the illustration that the city were to absorb the entire increase. So it'd be the total increase of the six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Couple items that are going to change, because currently you offer three plans, one of which is considered a high deductible health plan that can be partnered with a health savings account. The deductibles will be changing as of July first, which is dictated by the I R S. So anybody who participates in that particular plan, in order for it to continue to be qualified plan. The deductibles have to increase from three thousand two hundred for an individual. And sixty four hundred for anybody who covers their dependents to thirty three hundred for an individual. And sixty six hundred for anybody who covers themselves and dependents. One thing to note is the out of pocket maximums will not, that those will remain unchanged. Just a couple of notes here, because you are part of the local choice program. They require the decisions for their renewal to be submitted by April first. And open enrollment must be conducted between May first and May fifteenth. So in summary, ultimately, we're recommending to continue with the same plans that you offered today. So continuing with the three medical plans that are offered to the employees today. And our recommendation would be to go with option A, which is splitting the increase with the employees. So the city would absorb a portion and the employees would absorb a portion. Any questions?
Okay. Seeing no lights. Is there a motion to approve option A for the health assurance adoption? Second it. Counselor Holloway, did you have your line on for discussion or? Okay.
Thank you again for, on behalf of our. On behalf of our employees. For doing their research and coming back for, you know, to council about the best numbers. Possible, so I thank you again for that on behalf of the employees in our city, thank you.
Okay, all right, seeing no other lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, R two, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for allowing me to come back tonight. If you remember, at the last council meeting, we did in the regular business, a presentation that was about. An earmark funding request we wanted to submit for the community development fund. And this would be for the Hopewell Community Center. Air conditioning and locker room upgrades. Just a reminder, this is our opportunity once a year to submit these requests to our elected officials in Washington, D.C. Essentially, and ask them to put in their budget directing this money from the community development fund. Which is a HUD earmark. And we have provided the, with the assistance of the city attorney, a resolution for you. So what I'm asking tonight is if you would vote to approve the resolution that is included in your packet and in the agenda meeting. And we will proceed with the necessary paperwork to submit our request to our elected officials.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution in support of the earmark request for fiscal year twenty six. Federal HUD Community Development Fund?
So moved.
Okay, motion's made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yeah.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crocker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm wearing my water hat today. Thanks to Mr. Bennett, he did a good intro. So we spent a lot of time last week talking about the wastewater treatment plant. It does, the needs do not stop there. So our earmark request. Should I can you put the presentation for this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Bless you.
So we looked at potential projects outside of the treatment plant fence. For which, based on the Dewberry report, there are plenty. So I've highlighted some of the top ones. This particular earmark would be used to supplement city funding to address, start to address some of these problems. Based on the Dewberry report in March of twenty twenty four, the following pump stations were recommended for full replacement. I'm not sure we can touch the full replacement with these funds, the costs are just too significant. But those would be Mansion Hills, North Colonial and Sherwood Line. This earmark would give us the flexibility to pursue these improvements. And or upgrades rehabilitation at any number of these pump stations. Based on that same report, I've listed out ten pump stations here that rank as high priority. And moving through that, I've attached a couple of sample budgets from the Dewberry report. That would outline some of the costs, so you can start to see that. If the total cost held true at the Sixth Avenue pump station, two hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. With two million dollars total, one point six in federal funds, we could start to chip away at some of these high ranking pump station improvements. The same is true for Atwater Pump Station, and I did not go to the liberty of attaching them all, it's a rather lengthy document that. Does outline the rehabilitation needed at these facilities. But the costs do start to mount. You see roughly between two hundred and six hundred thousand dollars for each pump station, for which we have nineteen. So this earmark would go a long way towards starting to chip away at those, at the needs of the pump stations. And along the same vein, I think we have a resolution prepared that we would ask that you approve tonight to allow us to. Submit our federal earmark, which does require the city to, if we are successful, to match twenty percent. As mentioned last week and prior. And I'll take any questions if you have.
Okay, seeing no lights for questions? Do we have a motion to approve the federal earmark funding opportunities for fiscal year twenty twenty six Hopewell Water Renewal as presented? Oh, okay.
Can you kind of give, where those funding if approved?
Sewer budget. If this earmark is approved through Congress, it would likely happen. Middle of next year, which is going to put us into the next fiscal year of requesting funding for pump station upgrades. It's a rather lengthy process. So this, right now, in concept, the resolution supports us putting in the application for the earmark. It's not a budget authorization to spend. Spend that twenty percent, it's just allowing us to apply. Correct. Correct.
All right, thank you. Okay. All right, and I'll second it. Any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day. Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you. Major Reed.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. We too are requesting. Federal earmark funding, excuse me, earmark funding regarding public safety technology, and we have a resolution prepared as well for approval.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the earmark flock expansion technology resolution as presented? All right, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day. Counselor Holloway.
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Crocker, you're back.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Crocker and I worked to draft up a resolution for this proposed reallocation of funds. I would recommend that we place it on the next meeting's agenda for Mr. Crocker to present it and for. City council to vote on it, then because it is a budget reallocation that's less than one percent. Of the city's total annual budget, it does not, it would not need to be. Put through this same. Two readings process, it could be voted on at the, at the next meeting.
Okay, all right, so is everyone in favor of tabling it?
I'm in favor of tabling and I'm also very interested in this statement that changes the trajectory of everything. When you're talking about less than one percent of the city's budget does not have to go for a second reading, that's quite informative information.
Yeah, then when a budget is more than two percent. That requires a budget resolution. It has to go through the finance department and the whole entire budget changes. When it's less than two percent, it doesn't need two readings. So more than two percent requires two public readings, less than two percent can just be voted on.
The only reason I made this statement, because we, there has been several things that have been brought before, is that we just like, oh, no, you can't have. Can't do it until the second reading, it's been way less than, now this one percent of the, or two percent of the entire budget or just the department's budget?
Entire budget.
Interesting, thank you.
Counselor Holloway, in case you're curious, this is. I don't, I apologize, I don't mean to gain some documentary, it's one percent, but it comes from fifteen point two dash two five zero seven A.
That's great, I took your word for it. But it was just interesting, because you know, a lot of things we have second readings for.
Well, not everything is a budget, but that has, that needs second reading.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, moving on to R six. Mr. Gaston or Mr. Crocker, whichever. I know you'll be happy to give that hat up one day.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is James Gaston the third, I am Deputy City Manager for the City of Hopewell. To my right, your left is Mr. Henley and of course, we've got Mr. Crocker, who is head of the Water Department. Recently, the county of Prince George asked. The city if they would be interested, or we'd be interested in allowing two million gallons or M G D, as they like to call it. Per day to be siphoned over to the water renewal plant. With the letter that they sent to us, they asked us for five specific examples of what they were looking for. We, along with our H D R rep, Mr. Henley and Mr. Crocker responded to those requests. And in essence, we are currently at nine million per day. They asked for two million per day for an economic development park that is going to be built in Prince George. They need the answer, if you will, by April first, or they'll lose on a ten million, ten million dollar grant from the Commonwealth. With that being said, there is no specifics, there's no detail, there's no contract. The county of Prince George just needs a formal agreement or letter that says if this project gets off the ground. And if they choose to pick Hopewell Water Renewal as the source, because there are other options for them. That this letter would allow us, allow them to take advantage of the ten million dollar grant. And like I said, March nineteenth, we submitted the letter, we answered their questions. As of right now, they are still debating next steps. And I, I guess it was two weeks ago, went to Prince George County. The subject was raised, I answered the questions that were asked from the commission. And in Prince George, and as of right now, we're waiting for them to make their decision. They can choose not to outhave their two million dollar allocation to us, there's other options. But this gives them the opportunity to let the Commonwealth know that they don't want to miss out on their ten million dollar grant that expires April first. That is the essence of my presentation. I do have Mr. Henley from H D R and I have Mr. Crocker, who is wearing many hats to answer any specific. Scientific questions that you may have.
Okay, Counselor Holloway.
Mr. Crocker. I think. It's an awesome thing for the surrounding areas to have interest in our water renewal. Could you tell me, in light of the circumstances from the last city council's meeting? What type of effect that would have, giving an answer now, will we be in a position? To be able to handle that with the current issues that we have in place?
So I think the important thing to remember is we have the hydraulic capacity to service their demands. We, despite our challenges at the plant, we are meeting limits. The two million gallon per day is not an immediate influx. We do have time to work on some things at the plant, however, we have to keep that forward looking vision. We are a source for them to send their wastewater to. I think it's certainly a good option for the city to be positioned where we are, to be able to accept that flow. So I don't think it creates any burdens and challenges right now, even with what we're facing in terms of repairs and things we need to make at the plant.
Absolutely incredible. I'll go ahead and with that answer satisfactory, I'd like to make the motion to.
Well, before we do that, we do have H D R that has come from out of town. He has a presentation that he presented to the water treatment plant. And I would like to give him the opportunity to also share some of that presentation, he doesn't have to go through it all. But there are some technical information and there may be some additional questions that council has from that presentation that was presented to the commission as well.
Thank you, thank you.
She has presentation, so we should get. You got it? Okay, great. Could you, could you open that laptop up for me?
That's okay. Yeah, I had some slides that put it in a better format for.
He doesn't need it.
He doesn't?
No.
Perfect, okay, great.
Yeah, so, you know, at a high level, so H D R was engaged.
In due something.
Oh, sorry. Dan Henley, H D R. Thanks for having me. Yeah, yeah, happy to. So we evaluated the current capacity of the treatment facility there. Based on what the facility was designed for and what it's currently receiving. There's, it's a really complex facility, I think you probably heard a lot about it over the last several weeks. But it's designed in somewhat unique way in that the domestic flow has to be treated in a separate treatment train from the industrial flows that are also discharged to the facility. So that really limits where this additional flow could go. And that's what we, that's what we based our evaluation off of, was the capacity of the domestic treatment side to accept this additional flow. And one important thing to note is that it's not just flow, it's not just millions of gallons a day, it's also the contaminants that come with that. So when we look at capacity, we look at flow as one piece of it, but there's also the organic loading, the solids loading, the nutrient loading, so nitrogen and phosphorus. And based on the assessment, and again, this was comparing the current flows and loads to the design basis. We didn't do a detailed assessment of, you know, what the facility in its current state would be able to achieve. But again, based off of comparison to the design basis, the only parameter that exceeded the design basis is solids load. So the solids coming in to the domestic treatment side is about fifty percent higher than it was designed for. Everything else is about forty percent lower, so flow, nutrients, organic loading. So from, from that perspective, there is capacity, but there is. So from, from that perspective, there is capacity, but there is, uh, you know, that challenge associated with the solids, uh, coming into the facility. There hasn't been really like a root cause analysis or anything done to, uh, ascertain what the source of that is. The samples were based off of, uh, analyses done in the collection system, so not an impact of recycled streams in the treatment plant from the solids handling process or anything. Something in the collection system, either a discharger or just a sampling methodology that, you know, might be skewing the numbers. But regardless, the, the data that we assessed showed that the TSS was high, I'm sorry, the solids in the, coming into the plant was higher than it was designed for. So the, the report goes into a bit more detail on that. I won't belabor the point here, but, um, I'd say that's the biggest takeaway. And then assuming that something is done to resolve the issue with the solids loading and the associated issues it causes at the plant, bring that back down close to the design range or the design basis, or make improvements to allow the facility to process that higher solids loading, then that frees, that, you know, kind of restores that capacity that is, uh, currently unavailable because of the solids loading. So if that can be done, then, um, probably go down towards the last page if you don't mind. We also considered, uh, the forecasted growth within the city of Hopewell to make sure, you know, that you weren't sacrificing any capacity you needed for economic development here. So that was factored in. Um, so just up one more page, please. Uh, probably towards the end of section five two.
Here?
Uh, down a little bit further. Little more. Yeah, the bottom of this page. And then zoom in towards the bottom so folks can see. So the takeaway here is that, again, assuming the solids issue is resolved, uh, and in the near-term capacity, there is about four MGD of available capacity in the treatment plant to receive additional flows. So, you know, as was mentioned, this is beyond the, the two MGD requested in the near term. The challenge is, uh, you know, kind of in that fifteen-year timeframe, there's only about three point six MGD of flow available, uh, for, you know, other sources to discharge. So it wouldn't be possible to, uh, accommodate the full five MGD requested by Prince George. So that, that's it. Um, any questions? Happy to answer. Uh, Counselor Holloway and then myself.
Absolutely. Uh, I have a question, a question for you. Alright, now in light of what I just asked the other gentleman, I'm now in concern again. You said that there's a fifty percent, um, higher solid challenge than we're able to take in at this moment where we are. How would we then take more so that challenge not be rectified?
Yes, so what's important to remember is any influx in new wastewater is gonna dictate some sort of project or process revision. Um, the details of our agreement with Prince George, whatever they may be, are not yet worked out. Um, there are plenty of things that we will have to do at the plant that should not come at the expense of the city relative to that flow coming through the plant. But that's to be worked out in an agreement between the city and the county of Prince George.
So, so the agreement is, is understandable that the agreement has to happen, but right now, we're talking about a challenge of fifty percent of solid. If that, the presenter, say, what was your last name again? Apologize?
Dan Henley.
Henley. Henley, Mr. Henley, uh, from his presentation is saying we have a challenge of, uh, there being more than a fifty percent.
Increase in solids.
Increase in solids that, that goes beyond the capacity of what our system can handle at this moment.
That's correct.
So going forward into agreement to accept more, then we're talking about possibly raising up to, I don't know what that percentage is, but how do we, how do we make a, a decision? It, it, you know, overall, anybody wants more business, but if that business is gonna essentially disrupt or cause problem, then we, we bite off more than we can chew. How, how, how do we, for, for, you know, this is y'all profession, but explain to someone who is not in that profession and our citizens to say, hey, it's okay, cause we don't want some disruption and then everybody got sewer backups, you know, from...
Sure. So right now, the question's about allocation, right? And we have fourteen MGD of allocation, nine of, of max months which we use. Um, we have two million gallon per day to give them. Now, relative to the influx of their flow and what that would cost in terms of upgrade to handle the additional solids, that is to be worked out, um, at a later date. It wouldn't be worked out prior to us saying. We do have the actual flow allocation to give. The details of that particular solids upgrade would need to be discussed as a part of bringing them into our system. Now, when I look at it, if I'm the county of Prince George, I'm gonna weigh what projects are available to me. Um, Blackwater Treatment Plant, which is a long distance from where they're, uh, and, and also has capacity limitations and geography limitations. They could build their own plant. Um, by virtue of my former job, I've seen what that plant would look like and the costs associated with that. And it's a whole lot more than helping the city of Hopewell to improve our solids process to be able to accommodate that flow. So I think it's a consideration in their minds that, um, any upgrade that would come by virtue of them sending their flow here, they would need to participate in that cost share. It's, it's not up for us to really perform that upgrade.
That's exactly the type of response I was looking for, so that's perfect. Uh, so that, that issue, um, I think will definitely rest my mind and citizens' mind, um, that they participate in that upgrade, which will again be a win-win on both sides. Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Alright, um, yeah, I just wanna say, you know, thank you guys, you know, for your, uh, work on this. I think this is, you know, a really good partnership opportunity, um, you know, for the city. And also ends up helping out Prince George, but it really gives us the opportunity to get our wastewater plant back to where it needs to be and become more competitive for state funding, federal funding, because it becomes more of a joint enterprise. Um, and, you know, I think that we, there's, there's also some really good, uh, you know, long-term positive things that can come from this, you know, if we do it right and we all work together. Um, so just wanna say thank you guys, uh, for that. And so do I have a motion to approve the allocation request of two million gallons a day to Prince George County? Motion's been made by Counsel Holloway and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yeah.
Counselor Day. Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Alright, the meeting has been adjourned.